For August the 21st. We are all here, and also I believe we have Mr. Whitaker present on the telephone. Jeremy, are you there?
Yep.
Thank you. Good to have you with us. We are going to begin this meeting with an invocation offered by Pastor Jonathan Montez from the Iglesia Pentecostal Unita Hispania Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance that will be led by Scout Burke Ellsworth from Troop 860. So I'd invite the pastor and the scout forward. Please stand for the prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I am Pastor Jonathan Montez. I'm going to be leading the prayer. Why don't we all bow our heads? Heavenly Father, Lord, you who are in heaven, Father, we thank you for this moment that we're here gathered, Lord, and we just give you glory, for you are good, you are to be exalted, and you are sovereign, Lord. Father, in this moment, we pray, Lord, that you may bless this meeting, this council, Lord, that all these matters that are to be spoken of, Lord, that you may give the wisdom, Father, for we trust in you, just the way our forefathers trusted, Lord, and this great nation has been established. Lord, on your word, and we just pray, Father, that you may take control of this whole room, Lord, that you may give the guidance, that all the matters may be according to your will, Father. We thank you, and we ask you all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Montez, and thank you, Burke, for getting our meeting started. We are going to deviate from the order of the agenda just slightly. We do have a gentleman that would like to speak under items from citizens present who has some constraints, and so we're going to move that to the front of our agenda. So invite forward Yaquim Rafael. Mr. Rafael, you have three minutes.
First and foremost, I would like to thank everyone for being here, and thank you guys for listening to me. As of now, I'm homeless, and I live in Mesa. I live in the East Valley Men's Shelter, and I've had some discrepancies with both the law and the justice system in general. But what I also see is something that I fear is commonplace in Mesa, and that's the treatment of the homeless. Now, I understand most people believe the homeless are, you know, a very certain kind of people, but that's not true. Not everyone's violent, not everyone's a crook. Some people are trying to get out of this mess, and which leads me to my big reason why I'm here. I'm here because I don't like the treatment I've been received, and I've been hearing about everyone, you know, who all, there's a lot of stories about homeless people being treated not so great in Mesa, and this is commonplace in Arizona in general. And I understand Arizona has programs to help us out and all that stuff, but some of these programs, you know, they're just, well, they're not really there to help you. But the question isn't really about why. The question is, how can we fix it? So let me explain to you guys something very interesting. I was given two tickets based on reports that were marginally fallacy, and I had no real way of defending myself, and I was wondering, should I fight it? Should I fight it, get the most expensive lawyer? Should I go in there and showcase it, hey, I'm an American, blah, blah, blah? It doesn't work, because then you're just feeding into the system, and you're giving more money than you don't own. So I believe the best way to handle this situation is coming to the people who have the most clout in any kind of situation, the people that are supposed to speak for us, and so since I am in Arizona, you are supposed to speak for me. What I'm trying to say is this, you know, I'm not trying to represent every homeless person, I'm trying to represent those that need it, and I'm trying to say this. I think there should be a little bit more reform, there should be a lot more mercy, not seen within, you know, in the streets, but within our system itself, which is trying to keep human beings to be human beings and not animals. And that's the biggest part of our justice system, and I feel like that's missing, because I went to the system itself, I went to the police department, and they said, it's a business, what do you expect? And I don't want to hear that. I want to hear, this is what we're here for. We're here to protect you, and we're here to showcase what humanity really is. But I don't see that. What I see is just animals with clothing, and I don't like that. I don't want to say that, you know? But if people are after money, and that's all this whole thing's about, what about people who don't have money? What about people who are still owing money, and they don't have money to owe, you know? There's so much in debt that it's just a paradox of who's in debt to what, it turns into grease. And I'm just wondering this question right now, you know, I'm in a position right now where I'm pretty much legally everyone, I'm blacklisted pretty much, and I'm just wondering, how do you guys, how are you guys going to fix this, you know, the treatment, you know, received to the homeless in the law system? So a guy had to pay $300 for a donut because he still didn't have any money. My question is, you know, where's the mercy? And what is Mesa really standing for when it comes to helping people that need it?
Thank you, Mr. Rafael.
Thank you.
You bet. We will now go to the first item on our agenda, which is, and Mr. Rafael, I don't mean to ignore you, but unfortunately, that's the items from citizens present is not on our agenda, so we can't engage in conversation and discussion or debate the things that are presented, but we appreciate you being here and sharing your thoughts with us. The next item on our agenda is awards and recognitions. We have some great activity out at House of Refuge in Mr. Thompson's district. Mr. Thompson, please fill us in on what's going on out there.
I would like to invite Nancy Marion up from the House of Refuge. She has something that she wants to say.
Mayor Giles, council members, and just wonderful citizens of Mesa. My name's Nancy Marion, and I'm the Executive Director of House of Refuge. In May 2016, House of Refuge received several extraordinarily difficult blows. We were one of 200 transitional housing programs throughout the nation that was defunded. As the perfect storm goes, we have 88 homes and our sewers decided to start to fail. Head Start, Early Head Start, also in 2016, had a massive funding cut, and we lost our onsite childcare program. And if that wasn't bad enough, our 45-year-old air conditioning in our administrative offices decided to quit. So not unlike our families that find their way into our programs, we were dealing with unforeseen catastrophes, and it just truly shook us to our core, and we really could have so easily just been a headline on a newspaper of another nonprofit that had closed its doors, but because of you, and I want you to hear that, because of you, your immediate decisive support has made it altogether different for House of Refuge. Mayor Giles, you sent us funding, and you sent us Director Elizabeth Morales, and she stood by our side for 109 days as we moved 144 residents off-site, and I will forever be thankful for that. Councilman Thompson, you advocated for us at the Attorney General's Office, and because of you, we received a grant. I said that our sewers were failing, and you can't have a home for homeless families if you don't have a sewer beneath it. And because of that, today, we have support for families, we have new sewers that are going in, and I'm so thankful for that, and all the support you have given us throughout the year. Remember the broken air conditioner I told you about? Train Heating and Air Conditioning heard about the problems that we were having, and they researched the nation, found two compressors that were 45 years old, and they had them flown in. They put their professional installers at our place, they installed them, and it was absolutely no cost to House of Refuge. So I could go on here, and I could talk about the compassion, I could talk about the support that has been shown to House of Refuge and the homeless families that we serve, but I'm here tonight for one simple reason, and that is to say thank you, thank you to the city of Mesa. Matthew 25:40 says, "Truly I tell you, whatever you did for one of the least of these brothers and sisters of mine, you did for me." Thank you, Mayor Giles. Thank you, Councilmember Thompson. I understand that Director Morales is in Avondale, and I extend to her my gratitude. But I thank you for being stellar examples of that passage. Your personal support 15 months ago, this month has turned that nightmare around. Because of your direct support, the least of these brothers and sisters of mine have not been forgotten. House of Refuge is once again filling homes with families, replacing sewers, finding employment for parents, and sending children to school. We are solidly on track to meet our goal of having all our homes filled by the end of next month, all because you had enough faith and compassion in our families and our program to give us your support. So, I hid these under here. On behalf of Board of Directors, the staff, and most importantly, the families of the House of Refuge, Mayor Giles, Councilmember Thompson, I bring you these humble gifts. I pray these inscribed bricks are daily reminders that as a faith-based organization, Jesus is the cornerstone of our foundation, but I think even he wouldn't mind sharing a little of that corner office space with you, and I thank you.
Thank you. Well, we'd be happy to come down and join you for a photograph. Thank you, those are very kind words, and let me just say that Mr. Brady, our entire city staff, the entire city council was really, this is, it's great to say thank you to individuals, but this was really a community response to the tragedy that occurred at House of Refuge. The Mesa United Way, many other organizations rallied. It was fun to see the way this community rallied around the cause.
Honestly, Mayor Giles, I think if the nation is looking for a spot in this world to see how a community can come together and solve a problem, I think they need look no further than Mesa, Arizona.
Thank you. We'll come down and take a photo. Thank you for pointing it out. Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Thompson.
If we could, Nancy, right behind you is a wonderful young man. Would you mind introducing him?
I would love to introduce him. Is the three-minute clock off? Because I could talk forever about this young man. His name is Landon Pickering, and when we were in the process of moving our 59 families off-site, we had some families who had anger management issues, and our homes were really, they were damaged beyond repair. And Rowan Pickering, I've known for quite a while, and he brought his son Landon out, and Landon was looking for an Eagle Scout project, and I took him around some rather minor projects that I thought he might enjoy, and he just wasn't the least bit interested. And so I took Landon into one of our homes that literally had 41 holes in the wall, and I could walk from one room to the other without touching anything but the studs. And so Landon came on board, and he said, I want to do that. That's the project I want for my Eagle Scout. So he put his shoulder to the wheel, he got the community involved, and because of Landon, that house is back online. It is beautiful, it is the prettiest one we have on property, and we have a family with two children that are enjoying the safety of that home. So thank you, Landon.
Thank you. Let's take a photo with you. Congratulations, that's a great Eagle project. Probably you have your proud parents here with you as well, right? Proud mom or dad, okay? So let's, we'll take this one and then the next.
Yeah, you can.
So let's start over here.
One, two, there we go. Thank you. Good job. You've already gotten your eagle?
I am working on it.
You got the project over, that's the hard part. All right, good job. Thank you very much. Let me give you a hug.
I can't see anything.
Okay, thanks again, and we sure are very proud of the way the community rallied around House of Refuge and all the good things that were happening there. Thank you, Mr. Thompson, for bringing that to our attention. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda, and we're going to invite Mr. Kevin Christopher forward to read the consent agenda.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. These are the items on the consent agenda, all items listed with an asterisk, will be considered as a group by the city council, and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless a council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. If a citizen wants an item removed, a blue card must be completed and given to the city clerk prior to the council's vote on the consent agenda. Item 2, approval of minutes of previous meetings as written. Item 3A, act on liquor license application for Harkins Theaters, 6950 East Superstition Springs Boulevard. Item 3B, act on liquor license application for Sun Devil Liquor, 235 North Country Club Drive. Item 3C, act on liquor license application for 7-Eleven, 815 South Dobson Road. Item 3D, act on liquor license application for University Farmers Market, 812 East University Drive. Item 3E, act on liquor license application for the Cutting Board Bakery and Cafe, 2235 South Power Road. Item 3F, act on liquor license application for Hen House Cafe, 805 North Dobson Road. Item 3G, act on liquor license application for Pho Vietnam, 1042 North Higley Road. Item 3H, act on liquor license application for Shangzi Garden, 67 North Dobson Road. Item 3I, act on liquor license application for Streets of New York, 542 West Baseline Road. Item 3J, act on liquor license application for Yon Grill and Hot Pot, 111 South Dobson Road. Item 3K, act on liquor license application for Me Tendita, 1560 West Main Street. Item 3L, act on liquor license application for Joey's PSG, 1036 East Main Street. Item 4A, act on bingo application for Red Mountain Activities, 7550 East Adobe Street. Item 4B, act on bingo application for Sunrise Village Residents Association, 5402 East McKellips Road. Item 5A, act on contract or purchase courtroom hallway monitor replacement and upgrade for Mesa Municipal Court. Item 5B, act on one-year renewal contract for janitorial and sanitation supplies for the materials and supply warehouse for city departments. Item 5C, act on contract to purchase one replacement phosphor projector and related equipment for the Arts and Culture Department for Mesa Art Center. This purchase is funded by the Mesa Art Center Restoration Fund. Item 5D, act on three-year term contract for rotary gas meters for the materials and supply warehouse for the Energy Resources Department. Item 5E, act on three-year term contract for meter set assemblies for the materials and supply warehouse for the Energy Resources Department. Item 5F, act on term contract for maintenance, repair, operating supplies, and related services for citywide use. Item 5G, act on three-year term contract for park playground and aquatics facility port-in-place servicing and synthetic turf repairs, maintenance, and installation for the Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities Department. Item 5H, act on contract to purchase one replacement narrow aisle lift truck for the Business Services Department, as requested by the Fleet Services Department. Item 5I, act on contract to purchase new mechanical PM10 street sweeper with high dump capacity for the Transportation Department, as requested by the Fleet Services Department. This purchase is funded by the local street sales tax fund. Item 5J, act on one-year renewal contract for refuse container bin lids for the Environmental Management and Sustainability Department. Item 5K, act on three-year term contract for manhole cleaning, inspections, and video documentation for the Water Resources Department. This purchase is funded by wastewater capital improvement project bonds and the Utility Replacement Extension and Renewal Fund. Item 5L, act on one-year renewal contract for traffic signal pole painting services for the Transportation Department. This contract is funded by the local streets sales tax. Item 5M, act on contract to purchase two new license plate reader camera systems for the Police Department. This purchase is mostly funded by a Salt River Pima Maricopa Indian Community Grant. Item 5N, act on contract for an emergency purchase of two new acuity vehicles for the Fire and Medical Department. This emergency purchase was approved by the Fire Chief and Assistant City Manager as necessary for the immediate preservation of the public health and safety. This purchase is funded by 2013 Authorized Public Safety Bonds. Item 6A, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a five-year memorandum of agreement with Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms, and Explosives for reimbursement of overtime and other costs for Mesa Police Officers working as members of a joint operation task force with ATF. Item 6B, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a grant agreement with the City of Tucson to accept grant funds for overtime for the Police Department's violent offender unit. Item 6C, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a sub-recipient agreement with the Arizona Department of Homeland Security to accept grant funds to purchase an additional vehicle and equipment for the Police Department's Terrorism Liaison Program. Item 6D, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Town of Queen Creek to allow the Mesa Fire and Medical Department to provide preventative maintenance and repair services on Town of Queen Creek fire vehicles and apparatus, and to be paid at an hourly rate. Item 6E, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into amendment number one to the intergovernmental agreement with the Maricopa County Human Services Department for the continued operation of Maricopa Workforce Connections Youth Center in Mesa. The agreement allows the county to utilize the City of Mesa Main Library as a hub to provide comprehensive workforce innovation and opportunity act youth program services to the eastern section of Maricopa County. Item 6F, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to accept a grant award from the Arizona Early Childhood Development and Health Board Southeast Maricopa Regional Partnership Council, first things first, over a three-year period, to retain an early learning consultant to foster cross-system collaboration to improve early learning, health programming, and service coordination for Mesa's young children and their families. Item 7A, introduction of ordinance regarding Z17-023, 1132 South Oakland Drive, located west of Greenfield Road and north of Southern Avenue. Rezone planned area development modification and council use permit for an inpatient substance abuse treatment facility. Item 7B, introduction of ordinance regarding Z17-024, the 2300 block of East University Drive, located east of Gilbert Road on the south side of University Drive. Rezone and site plan review to allow development of an attached single-residence subdivision. Item 7C, introduction of ordinance regarding Z17-026, the 6500 block of East Brown Road, located west of Power Road on north side of Brown Road. Rezone site plan review and special use permit to allow for development of a transitional senior living facility. Item 7D, introduction of ordinance regarding Z17-027, 1402 North Wrecker Road, located on the west side of Wrecker Road, north of Brown Road. Rezone to allow development of a second detached residence. Item 7E, introduction of ordinance regarding Z17-028, the 5400 to 5600 blocks of East Thomas Road, located east of Higley Road on the north side of Thomas Road. Rezone to modify the existing planned area development overlay. This modification will reduce the side and rear yard setbacks within the existing subdivision. Item 7F, introduction of ordinance regarding Z17-033, the 5600 through 5900 blocks of East Longbow Parkway on the north side, and the 3100 to 3200 blocks of North Wrecker Road on the west side. This is located south of the Loop 202 Red Mountain Freeway. Council use permit to allow installation of two multi-tenant freeway landmark monument signs within a commercial center. Item 7G, introduction of ordinance regarding Z17-022, the 8500 block of East Guadalupe Road, located on the south side of Guadalupe Road, east of Haas Road. Rezone and site plan review to allow for development of a single-residence subdivision. Item 7H, introduction of ordinance regarding Z17-021, the 8500 to 8800 blocks of East Guadalupe Road. This is located on the north side of Guadalupe Road, west of the 202 Santana Freeway. Rezone and site plan review to allow development of a single-residence subdivision. Item 7I, introduction of ordinance regarding Z17-029, rezone for West Side Clark Historic District to add the historic district overlay. This area is generally bounded by lots on the north side of West Second Place on the north, lots on the south side of West Pepper Place in the south, North Date on the west, and North Country Club Drive on the east. This request will create a local historic district. Item 7J, introduction of ordinance amending Title 11, Chapter 67, Section 4- E of the Mesa City Code to comply with recent changes to Arizona state statutes. This amendment will modify the conditions regarding written protest requirements that trigger a supermajority vote by the city council to approve land use actions. And item 8A, act on subdivision plat Canyon Preserve at Mountain Bridge, the 1600 through 2000 blocks of North Ellsworth Road, located on the east side of Ellsworth Road, south of McKellips Road. Mayor and council members, these are the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Christopher. Ms. Mickelson, do we have any additional blue cards?
No requests, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I see that there's been a motion made for the approval of the consent agenda, and a second, please cast your vote. Mr. Whitaker, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. The vote is unanimous in favor of adopting the consent agenda. The next item on our agenda is item 9A, which is to conduct a public hearing for the release of the petition for signatures for annexation case A17-002. This property includes the current and future Elliott Road right-of-way between Ellsworth Road and Signal Butte Road. I now declare the public hearing open. Ms. Mickelson, has anyone from the public requested to speak on this item?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Do any council members wish to address this issue? Hearing none, I declare the public hearing closed. There is no action on this item at this time. This annexation case will come back before us at a future council meeting. The next item on our agenda is item 10A. This is to conduct a public hearing on the creation of the east and west redevelopment areas. Just for the public's information, there was, we had a lengthy presentation on this at our council study session last Thursday, so we may or may not have additional presentations today, depending on what the public would like to hear. I now declare the public hearing open. Ms. Mickelson, I do have one blue card on this agenda item. Any others that you've received?
No additional requests.
Okay. I would invite forward Mary J. Miller. Thank you for participating in the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I appreciate being here today, and I wanted to speak to you about a couple of questions that I've had. I've spoken to the folks who are heavily involved in the RDAs, and I have a few questions that I'd like to get clarification if possible. You have mentioned that there are funds available for qualified developers. I've had some difficulty getting the definition of a developer. I understand the most common sense definition would be somebody who is going to invest and start a business in that area. My question, though, is particularly in the visually blighted areas, or in, the mention was, there are different definitions of types of blight. Are there any funds available for homeowners in those areas? And also HOAs? Because HOAs are kind of like the between zone from an individual homeowner or a developer. So are there funds available in the RDAs for homeowners or HOAs?
Great. Those are wonderful questions. Thank you for coming and asking those. Mr. Brady.
Thank you for coming. Just quickly, there are no funds that are sitting somewhere waiting to be spent on projects. When we talk about opportunities to support development, it's usually done through a mechanism called a Gplat, which essentially provides a tax incentive for developers to invest in areas that are blighted, and it's for a very restricted period of time. So it just converts how they pay their taxes, so it kind of lessens their tax burden overall. There's, it's much more complicated, but it just lessens their tax burden on the increment of the value they're adding at the site. But there is no pot of funds that are available readily to provide to either homeowners, commercial, or HOAs at this time. A year, or at some point after, if the council approves this tonight, we will bring back a plan. That was hard. A specific plan that'll maybe talk about items that we can help out in trying to overcome the blight, and so we'll work on that and bring that back to the public, and have that available for everyone to look at in the near future. Thank you.
Did that address your questions, ma'am?
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
A little bit. I understand that there are other programs within the city of Mesa. For example, there were some funds available for, like, converting landscape. And so are the people in the RDA areas maybe going to?
That's available for everyone.
I understand, but you would think if you're going to have an RDA area, you might give those areas a little bit more priority.
Sure.
Because I've heard about it for years, and every time I've checked into it for my own HOA, the funds are already gone.
Okay, fair enough, and that may be something we can address in the plan when we bring that back.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing that up. That's something we can look into.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great questions. I don't think that, just to, I don't mind responding to this just a little bit either. When in terms of who's a developer and who can walk in and say, here's my developer card, I want a check from the city, that's not really the way this works. There's not, the city doesn't advance funds or doesn't proactively fund these projects. This Gplat that Mr. Brady referred to is something where we can allow a developer, if they qualify, if it's a project that's going to be good for the city, we can park the title for that property under the city for a few years that allows them to pay less taxes. They still pay taxes, but there's some taxes they don't. So that's an incentive that we can give to a qualified developer, if we think that this is a project that's worthy of city support. So obviously, I provoked more questions, and so I just want to make sure that people understand that no one from the city is writing checks to developers.
I understand that, but for example, in an HOA, an HOA pays taxes to the city? And so is there any way that an HOA could potentially qualify for those tax breaks so that instead of giving the tax money to the city, we could help ourselves?
Yeah.
You know, and get like that tax break?
The rules for these Gplates are pretty specific, and they get narrowed every year by the legislature. It just happened this last legislative session, and I'm seeing people nodding.
Yeah, and Mayor, it'd have to be new improvements, so it's usually a significant So it's usually a significant amount of capital investment that's related to a new development. But we're going to take you up on some of your ideas you brought about landscaping and other programs we have in the city. When we come back with a plan, maybe, your point is well taken, that inside an RDA, whether it's residential or otherwise, maybe there's other programs we can extend to assist.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. I'm going to try and stay seated now. Thank you for your tolerance.
No, thank you. And we really appreciate you coming. It's sad when we have a public hearing and we don't have anybody asking questions. So thank you for doing that. Any other requests to speak? Okay, any council members have anything they want to address relative to this item? Hearing none, I declare the public hearing closed. And again, there's no action on this item at this time. Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking at the wrong agenda item. I declare the public hearing closed. We do have an action item. Item 10B is the adoption of a resolution finding and declaring the necessity for the creation of the east and west redevelopment areas. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you. Mr. Freeman and Mr. Luna have made the motion and seconded. Please cast your vote.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Whitaker. Mr. Whitaker votes aye, and the vote is unanimous in favor. The next item is Item 10C. It's the adoption of a resolution approving the expansion of the existing central business district to include the proposed east and west redevelopment areas. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Mr. Glover. And Mr. Luna, please cast your vote. Mr. Whitaker?
Aye.
Thank you. The vote is unanimous. Thank you. I believe that we've negotiated our way through that, Mr. Freeman. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Items from Citizens Present. We did hear from one gentleman earlier, but we have two cards that have come in since then. So I invite forward Maria Mancenas. Maria? We'd invite you to come forward. We do allocate three minutes under Items from Citizens Present.
Good evening, City Council. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Maria Mancenas, and I reside at Washington Escobido, 542 North Lewis in Mesa. So I'm here tonight to express my gratitude on behalf of the residents to the Neighborhood Outreach Office, Economic Development, Solid Ways, Parks and Recreation, Transportation. And unfortunately, I'm also here to express some dissatisfaction in regards to the use and design of the alleyway located on the west side of Helen Hope Chest behind the Surryne The use and design of alleyways in Washington Escobido has been a topic of discourse and conflict. When we designed our Quality of Life Plan, we provided a lot of ideas. Ideally, we requested to make the alleyways more walkable areas with lighting benches and everything. And we understand that the alleyways are property of the city. We understand that. And lately, has been some discussion and concerns from the residents with some city councils and the court. So my feeling is that at this point, it's too late to stop the paving of that particular alleyway. So unfortunately, we did not have enough time to discuss this topic further. So I hope that in the future, the city council and the developer allow the residents more time to have an opportunity to express our ideas. And hopefully, we can work together. As you know, I sent you all a copy of the Quality of Life Plan on page six, working together for success. So I hope that we continue adhering to those points, to those items, to work collaboratively in a more successful and cohesive way. I also want to give you a quick update. The Washington Escobido is now in the process of exploring the rezoning. I want to thank Mr. Brady for approving the Economic Development Office to explore that possibility. There's, that area has at least five or six zoning codes. We would like to bring that area to single housing. So that's already in the process. We're waiting for Mr. Wesley to come and give us an update. And we are also in the process of partnering with Arizona State University to further the goals on their housing and education. So thank you for your time, and we look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mancenas.
You're very welcome.
Thank you for being so involved in your community. Nancy Thompson?
That would be me. I live on Surryne Street. This is my alley. And I started working on, I figured out the key of them not being allowed to work on use and design. We were only asked if we wanted block walls or gates, how we wanted that. Okay, now my back property line looks like the city. And as you know, we're all kind of get freaked out because of Site 17 with eminent domain. And the city has committed themselves to this Quality of Life Plan, which is a really good process because it was slow, it was really comprehensive. And I've been writing about this alley for three years, over three years, to Cynthia Dunham, because she's the most willing and open person that I don't have to be afraid of writing to, saying what I really think. And I included my neighbor's input as I wrote. It was pretty much an as-I-went history of it. So I can provide all that. On my blue card, I put that the city is out of compliance with our QLP, which I hope that doesn't scare anyone, but it's nice to be able to turn the tables. And I just mean, we're supposed to work together for success. I got the surprise alley notice when Cynthia was gone for two weeks. And I did my best, and Maria got it stopped, but not until Cynthia got back. It was just stopped for that week, leaving me not well-brain-equipped to write more things and think well. And then Lindsay Bulenky was supposed to come from Neighborhood Service, and instead, the same people that ignored my phone calls came with this in their hand, which is not to talk, it's to tell me that it's going forward. That's not working together. That's not discussion. It's not Quality of Life Plan way. So I'm here because I don't think it's too late. I have, in writing, the ASU professor, who specialty is environment and how it affects social people socially. And he has said that, yes, he will help. He's with ASU Sustainability. And this also affects the sustainability of whether our Quality of Life Plan will just disappear into the dust or whether we'll keep working together for success. It's a really healthy way for people to get along with all the stress everybody has. Look, all the news all over the country. This is really good. This is a really good thing for everyone to learn. You don't have to get helpless and hopeless. And it's slow to learn, but it's solid. It's really solid. So, let's see. The other thing is the Heritage Neighborhood Designation Promises Us, or Promises, I don't, that's probably the wrong word, but to recognize and support the maintenance of socially, culturally, and historically significant neighborhoods. Recognize means recognize my Quality of Life Plan when you come into my neighborhood and support me to try to implement it with people, all of my neighbors. It's really hard. And the One Mesa Pledge also concludes by saying, "Therefore, we pledge to work together as a community to respect diversity and inclusion." That means of my neighborhood, it's all kinds of diversity and inclusion. Even the dogs. I want to know, what's the dog's opinion? Do they want asphalt there? Or would they rather have something natural? Our Quality of Life Plan is that inclusive that we can say that and ask for that. So continues, "We are committed to fostering, cultivating, and preserving a culture of diversity, inclusion, fairness, and equality." And even though they started work on this alley, it has not been paved. And the ASU professor, he can come this week, but he said Thursday, and I don't know if he can come sooner, he had a class tonight. And other neighbors, like one other neighbor, he started a class at MCC. So we need better input, to get the input. And I don't believe it's too late, but I can't stop this steamroller by myself. And I think we could adjust the design somehow to include and be fair, because we're the ones who have to live with it. And we don't know all the choices even. We need help with that. But even if somehow you're going to, it's a representation of the city of what's happening. And we need the city to show they care, willing, open. Show us good ways. Leaders, create climate. Please help me create a climate of environmentally friendly, less-stress environment for my neighborhood. I've got lots more to say, but I gave a packet to John Wesley. Yay big, because like I said, I've been doing this for three years. And I really tried to put it in order, and I'm trying to do a Quality of Life Plan way. But it takes all sides. So I just need help.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. I'm sorry that we can't respond directly because it's not on our agenda, but I know that staff, we look forward to working with you, and I know you know the staff very, very well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes the items that are on our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Thompson. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. We are adjourned.